So I'd like to call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for June 15, 2021. Misty, can we have roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Did she ask for Catherine?
Yes, she did.
Are we done with roll call?
Yeah.
All right, fantastic. I got confused there.
Catherine goes before me, so.
All right, so let's all rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let's move to the approval of the City Council minutes of June 1, 2021. Any corrections or motion?
I move adoption of the minutes from the June 1, 2021, meeting.
Second.
So motion by Ms. Curler and a second by Mrs. Bishop. Need discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Waters?
Aye. Or aye, yea?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye is good.
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Abstain.
Mr. Fields?
Abstain.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0 with Ms. Quidno and Mr. Fields abstaining.
All right, correspondence. Ms. Bishop, any correspondence?
Yes, I had some correspondence regarding people speeding through the Bartles Beach area and down that road. I guess it's a little dangerous at the rate of speed they were and the people that are always around the area. I also had correspondence about the, I guess, the channel between the pond and the lake and how that has become filled in and hard or difficult to get boats in between the two bodies of water. And I had correspondence about the Story Walk and the Santa that are going in two different parks here.
Had a busy two weeks. Ms. Quidno, anything?
Yes, I had some correspondence regarding the state of the cemetery and how it didn't appear to be cleaned up as well as it has been in the past. I also got the same correspondence that Catherine did with regard to Story Walk and the Santa.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fields?
I had a couple of, just received one email this afternoon about the AA GLM, and I also received a phone call last week. A gentleman looking to see if we have UTVs, are able to ride on the city streets. Now that the township did it, he was looking to see if he could bring his vehicle into work. Informed him that we do not have ordinances on that yet. And then I talked to a few people down at Sandy Beach who approached me. They were looking for, they liked the new improvements we did on the boat launch. They said one thing we could do to help out a little bit would maybe just paint a couple of lines, three lines, on the boat landing so they designated it two lanes. Some people are still trying to use the middle. And also when they, they said when they back in, it's a lot steeper so they're gonna lose the wheels for a while where the lines might give them assistance lining up the boats going in. But that was just one item they said would make it a little easier for them. That's it for me.
All right. Ms. Curler?
Just the email I think everyone received from Carol Burrows on behalf of the Arts Alliance about the Story Walk and Big Santa.
All right, and the only additional thing I had on top of all that was something related to the speeding as well, but it was in a different area of town. Was more concerned with the high school students on Milton, Milton Road, Milton Street, one of those. So I did go and visit and observe after school, but it was after the seniors had already gone by, so it wasn't as, it wasn't as busy since the seniors are already out of school. All right, so that wraps up correspondence. We'll move to the questions and public comment section. Today, we don't have any public hearings, so let me read the statement that goes before this portion of our meeting. "The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered, the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided." All right, so I'll open it to comment here in the chamber. Anybody have comments? Go ahead. When you get up to the podium, you're gonna see the microphone. It'll have a red or green light, and you wanna have the green light, so press the button.
Thank you. There's a terrible echo here, by the way. It's extremely difficult to comprehend and hear. It's better while I'm standing here. So thank you for receiving me. My name is John Thody. I have signed in. I live at N 6662 Shorewood Hills Road in the township of Lake Mills, and I'm here representing the Rock Lake Improvement Association. And so we've noticed over the years at the Rock Lake Improvement Association that there's a number of things that occur along the shoreline, work that's done by riparian owners that do not follow either the county guidelines with regard to the township or the city zoning code. We've had conversations with the county about that and with the city about that. Both parties have expressed their frustration in enforcing the code after the fact, after people have done work, and then the city has to step in and say you didn't do that properly, you should have submitted documents, et cetera. So in response to that, we prepared this pamphlet that has been sent to all of you. It has also been sent to the plan commission members. It's been sent to all the riparian owners on the lake, both in the township and in the city of Lake Mills. It's been sent to everybody on the mill pond. It's been sent to the board of the Rock Lake Homeowners Association, which is over in the township, and it's also been sent to the 29 owners of the Cedars Homeowners Association down on Ferry Drive in Lake Park Place. This is just an attempt for us to try and help clarify what's in the code and clarify what the responsibilities are. We did meet with city staff when we had this in a earlier format. We received very good input from the city. One of the things the city pointed out was don't try and paraphrase what the code says and don't try and restate what the code says. So we kept the language in here very simple, basically telling people in the opening paragraph and in the paragraph of the city section and in the paragraph of the township section to contact the city or contact the township before you even start planning something because there is a lot of jurisdiction over what does happen along the shoreline, most specifically within the shoreline buffer, which is the first 35 feet above the high water mark. There's quite a bit of jurisdiction regarding that, and that's also where we're seeing a lot of the ordinances not being followed. So I hope you look through this. It has section on the city, a section on the township, and also has definitions on the back. Again, I've been through both the codes and they, it's just difficult to read codes and code sections and fully understand them. And so this is just our attempt in simplifying this. Hopefully in the future, it'll be easier for people to be able to follow the ordinances, and hopefully they will be receiving this. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, I want to thank the city for their input on this as well as thanking the county for their input as well. They both gave us extensive input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thody. All right, is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to address the council? All right, how about anybody virtually online that wants to address? And I'll give you one more chance. Anyone online?
There doesn't appear to be anybody but staff and council online.
All right, thanks, Steve. All right, so we'll move to Agenda Item 7, City Manager Report. Go ahead, Steve. We can't hear you. Hang on.
You can hear me now?
Now, I got you. Yep.
Okay. So the May, I provided the May Utility Check Register and the May General Fund Check Register. I also provided the final memo in a series of three that were out. They're all related to the audit, which is on the agenda tonight. And then I provided a memo with the audit. I do want to apologize. Seems that I've become Mr. Unfortunate. I picked up pneumonia from my surgery, so I've been very weak and quite sickly. I had extreme fevers and chills over the weekend and Monday, so sorry about some of the problems we've had tonight. So with that, that's the end of my report.
All right. So we got all the information that you mentioned in your report, and it was a good, good reading. Does anyone have any questions for Steve on any of those items?
Mr. Waters, if I may, just thank you, Steve, for, even though it's outside my area of expertise, but I think those three memos did help me then understand the financial report in trying to read that, so I appreciate you putting the time into helping to educate us on those, and I'm sure Betsy helped too.
All right, Item Number 8, Acceptance of the Public Works Board of May 11, 2021. Steve, did you have any comment on that? All right, so I'll accept that as submitted. We'll move on to Item Number 9, which is council business. Item A is a private well permit at 369 Pine Street. So Steve, did you have any comment on that, or is there somebody else online that would like to comment on that?
I've got it. It's a, as noted, state statute requires us to take permits on all private wealth. And most of them are required to be abandoned, but if they have some ability to continue to use it or they maintain it in a proper fashion, so they have to provide, every year they have to provide documented information that they're taking care of the well appropriately. And that's why we do a well permit. This one happens to be in the cemetery, so it's ours. And Greg just got a little bit of a slow jump on it, so historically, the second meeting in June is when we see a lot of them, but this year there was a little bit earlier. I think we still have one outstanding, but it's, it's a pretty standard.
All right, so I guess this is a document that needs to be signed, so it does need to have a motion to move it forward. So I took that out of order, so I apologize. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve the application for private well permit for?
369 Pine Street?
Yes, thank you. Second.
So motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Ms. Quidno. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, moving forward, confirmation of the city manager appointment of the city Forest and Parks and Forestry Director. Can we have a motion for 21-6-2-1?
I'll move approval of motion 21-6-2-1, confirming the appointment of Eric Schreiner.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Steve, do you have any, any comment on this?
Yeah, actually, we were kind of surprised at the quality of the candidates we received, and we did interview five once and then two twice. Eric did come to the top. He does live in the area, has grown up in the area, did actually work for the city of Lake Mills historically, had a real good handle coming out of the DNR and how to manage projects and how do you stay on task, and he presented very well. So I'm, he's also very well-written and spoken, so I look forward to working with Eric.
All right, any questions?
I understand that Eric is in the room. Can he come up and introduce himself to us, or? I move that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Schreiner to come to the podium and talk with us. Second.
Roll call now, huh? So we had a motion by Mrs. Curler, and a second by Mrs. Bishop. Roll call.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
First of all, I want to say I want to entertain a motion to tell him to get a shave.
You should have seen it before I cut it.
Here in no second on that, we'll let Mr. Schreiner have the floor. Thank you.
All right, I got a green light, so hopefully everyone can hear me.
It works.
All right, well, I'm very proud to be here. It's, my name's Eric Schreiner, and if I haven't met you already, I'd love to meet you at some point. But as Steve said, I was born and raised here in Lake Mills, and it's, it was an honor to work for the city a couple of years ago when I was in college. And just to be standing here is really, really important to me. The community means a lot to me, and I really appreciate it. Last five years, I have worked for the DNR. That's what I went to school for. It was my dream and passion to be a ranger. From there, I actually worked in recreation management as my specialty, focusing on boat landing, maintenance, and development. What we do is we do property development on newly accessed properties for the DNR. So we do everything from planning, building, coordinating, equestrian trails, hiking trails, fishing access, shoreline restoration, new boat access sites, basically anything that involves recreational development is what my team specialized in. When this position came up, it was something that I really looked forward to, and it's the only position that I considered leaving the DNR for, and I loved it there, so hopefully I love it here too. If you have any other questions, I'm, I'm all ears.
Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, is there any questions on the original motion? Karen, then let's move to roll call.
Before I do the roll call, Mr. Waters, I'm just gonna read the title of the motion.
Oh, thank you.
City Council Motion 21-6-2-1, Confirmation of City Manager Appointment of Parks and Forestry Director, now known as Grounds and Facilities Director. And the roll call is Mr.
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Congratulations, I guess. All right, so I'm going to change things up a little bit here. We have a gentleman visiting from Manitowoc and get him up on the agenda a little bit so that he can present and move forward. Hang on here. So that's Item G on our agenda. Misty, can you read the Resolution 21-35?
Yes, just one moment. Resolution 21-35, Resolution of the City Council, the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report as presented by the external audit firm.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to resolve 21-35, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report as presented by the external audit firm.
I'll second.
All right, so we had a motion by Mrs. Quidno and a second by Mr. Fields. And Steve, did you want to just hand the microphone over, or did you, did you have some comments before we get to that?
No, I think my memos have provided everything. Chuck has been with us a long time, knows everybody here, has a pretty good background, so I'll let him speak, and then if they're, if I can't, if he can't answer it, maybe I can, but I doubt that.
All right, welcome, Mr. Is it, how do you say your last name?
Krieger.
Krieger. Chuck Krieger?
Yeah, like double E even though it's U-E.
All right, fantastic.
All right, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm gonna, there were a number of reports issued. I think we'll go with the summary report. It's labeled Summary Financial Report within Independent Auditor's Report, okay? I could go with a more lengthy one, except I saw it was kind of a short agenda, and I want to keep it that way. So first off, a lot of new faces, so obviously if you don't have a lot of experience with it, feel free to ask questions. And if it's something I can answer tonight, great. If it's something that takes a little research, get them to Betsy and she'll get them to me, and I'll get you an answer. So with that, first item, if you look at page 2, actually 2 and 3 of that show to report, labeled Independent Auditor's Report, just a couple of comments on that. It says independent. So we are independent with respect to the city, other than we have a, we charge you a fee and you pay the fee and that's it. We, we have no other interaction with you. Obviously, we don't sit on any boards or any sort of interaction with, with the city, other than providing the audit services, okay? And you'll see that the report is broken down into a couple of different parts. You know, its management has responsibility, okay? Your responsibility is to give us information, and then we do an audit and give you an opinion on that information, okay? The auditor's responsibility is, follows that in the next paragraph. And then on the top of page 3, the opinion. That's really what your opinion is for, is to give you an opinion. And it says, Summary Financial Statements as of and for the years ended December 31, 2020 and 2019 are consistent in all material respects with the audited financial statements, okay? The audited financial statements say that the reports are materially correct, okay? Now, it doesn't mean we looked at every transaction. Number one, you wouldn't want to pass for that. Number two, we wouldn't want to spend the time, okay? So we look at enough information and transactions to give ourselves a level of comfort that they are materially correct, okay? And so it's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can get. And it's the same opinion that the city has had since I've been on this job, which is, as Steve said, a long time. I don't think it's that long a time, but years go by pretty quickly sometimes. But you do get a clean opinion, and that's, that's a testament to the staff that you have here. They give us the information in good order, and we, we do our audit work and are able to issue that clean opinion. So if we flip the page to page 4, this is a combined balance sheet, okay? I know it's a little, little small in the printing because we're kind of putting together your city operations and the utility operations all in one, in one area in one page. Just a couple of comments on this. It starts off cash at the top, deferred outflows and liabilities, deferred inflows and equity. I'll just touch on a couple items in each section. The asset section, your cash is up a little bit from last year. That kind of ebbs and flows with when you cut checks, what kind of maybe construction activity you had going on near the end of the year. Did you cut that check before the end of the year, after the end of the year? You have a fair amount of, you know, you assess taxes. Some people pay more in by December 31. Other people wait and pay their installments. So all that figures into your cash level. Then you have some restricted cash put way down. That's typically unspent proceeds from loans and bonds, okay? Next section, that major section is receivables, taxes receivable. That's pretty standard. Like I said, it kind of ebbs and flows with what cash is collected, and that reduces the receivable balance. The one big thing I will point out, they show your special assessments are more than double what they were last year. You had some major projects that were assessed in 2020, and some of those were actually paid before the end of the year. You've got a lot of assessments for developers and that type of thing. And you have some that are just your normal special assessments for road or curb and gutter or sidewalks, okay? But you collected a fair amount, you assessed a lot, and you collected a fair amount during the year. Still some larger balances outstanding. You'll notice one little item under the receivables, the loan balance. You have a revolving loan fund, or maybe at this point it's had, past tense. For years, you had a revolving loan fund, and you'd loan money to local businesses that were in need of capital, I guess, that the bank wasn't going to give them 100% of what they needed. You were kind of a fallback loan, and the, and as they paid it back, you brought it in, then you turned it around and loaned it out to other businesses. Well, over the years, you didn't have a lot of activity in that. You did have one loan outstanding at the end of 19, and that was paid in full when the, when the balance came due in 2020. So, and at this point then, the loan, revolving loan fund has been disbanded. The money, I believe, was returned to the state. That's where it originally came from. They gave you money to start this loan fund, and that's what it goes back to. Other items there to note, you have some advances, about a million dollars, 1.3. That's mostly due to your tax incremental districts. A lot of the tax incremental districts spend money. They may not have the proceeds yet to pay for it from either bonds or notes, so the city advances them funds. And that's the inter fund there. At some point with the tax increments will catch up to all their bonds and notes and inter fund activity, and that will be paid back, assuming the increments, the districts are successful. At this point, you have a number of them. It seems like they're adding one every year. Maybe that's just my, you know, my recollection, but the other, the ones that have been established for a while, I would say are doing well. And I think number 2 is ready to be closed out, which means it will have all its debt paid off. paid off and any excess will be distributed to the underlying jurisdictions. So, the next, I just want to point out the one little thing in the Wisconsin retirement system, that's the next line under the advances and there's also some information under the deferred outflows of resources and down three quarters of the page under deferred inflows. Wisconsin retirement system, you have your retirement plan and you also have a life insurance plan that runs through the WRS, okay? Those monies, you know, you see some big numbers there in some instances. That's not anything you can spend, okay? The Wisconsin retirement system works as a multi-employer plan. You put money into it every year. They have actuaries determine how much you, they think you're going to have to pay over the course of all the current and former, you know, employees. And then they compare it to how much you're going to take in. And if it's overfunded, you'll see an asset there. And this year it was overfunded, so you see your Wisconsin retirement system net pension of $232,000. That's your portion of the overfunding for the Wisconsin retirement system in its totality. Your amount that, your portion of that is, I don't know, a 10 to 1% maybe? It's relatively small. The number is big for you. The overall system is huge. And the Wisconsin retirement system is well-run. There aren't that many systems in the country that can say that they have more assets than liabilities, that they have enough to pay their liabilities over time, but Wisconsin's is one of the few that is in that position. I would venture to say Illinois is not even close to that. The only other ones I can think of is California's inching up there, but there are a lot of them at 80% or below. So the 101 or 102% of the funding is, you're in good shape. Going down to the liability section, things are very comparable from year to year if you, if you kind of do the flight on both columns from 2020 to 2019. Your long-term obligations increased a little bit in 2020 for the city portion of stuff and the utility debt decreased a little bit. Overall, it's very close in total to what it was the prior year. And obviously, you take out debt for street improvements and that type of thing. The utility takes out debt for putting in water and sewer. Typically, when you rip up the street, if it's not just an overlay, you're going to take care of water and sewer at that point, too. So there's a lot of times there's debt that's taken out that goes hand in hand. Then you go down, if you get down to the equity section, again, it's up about $2 million from last year. A general fund is, is up a little bit from last year. Some of that ebbs and flows with, with unspent bond proceeds. You take in the money, you issue bonds, you take in that money. If you haven't spent it all, it goes into your reserves. So next year, if you spend what you didn't spend in 2020, you spend it in 2021, some of that might actually go down, okay? That's just the, like you said, the ebbs and flows of when you get the cash in and when you actually do the, do the expenses.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes?
Let me ask a question about the deferred inflows and the Wisconsin retirement system items. I understand why we would be paying into the Wisconsin retirement system for pensions for our employees, but why would we be receiving revenue from those?
Well, the inflows and outflows are not, they're like what I call quasi-assets and liabilities. They, there will be outflows, not that the city has to pay in, it's an actuarial determination. So the outflows are really stuff that's going to go out of the, out of the Wisconsin retirement system. Inflows are going to be what comes in, okay? And it's really an actuarial determination. Number one, you will never have to pay that number. And number two, you won't get the dollars in the, in the inflows and outflows, you won't get those assets in, okay? It's frankly, if I were doing it, I wouldn't worry about inflows and outflows. It's, it just kind of muddies the water. I like the idea that, okay, there's either an asset if you're overfunded or a liability if you're underfunded. That's, that's kind of simple and, and the easier way to look at it, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if we flip the page, actually two pages, we have a pie chart on the next page shows your breakdown of revenue. And behind that on page five is the detail on some numbers. Revenue's up some compared to last year, property taxes, the special assessments, which I referred to earlier. Other grants, you had some COVID grants this year, wealth to recovery. I suspect you will be getting some other COVID money this year, little larger dollars. It's for, I think they issued some by county in the state for anyone that's municipality under 50,000 population. And they kind of divided it up based on population and budgets. And I'm guessing Betsy, if she hasn't submitted that SL 330 already, she will be doing that this week. I think the due date is coming up. Yeah, so that's going to be something that impacts 2021. And as I recall, that COVID money you have till 2026, 2024, I think, to spend it. So you have quite a bit of time to, to do that and put in some stuff that maybe would help you from a COVID prevention perspective, but also, you know, I've got some clients that are looking at filtering systems on their HVAC, okay? From the air circulation or what have you. So it's, it's some significant funding that, that will, will help a lot of municipalities out. Moving down, other than that, you know, there's, a lot of stuff is very similar to last year. The exception I had mentioned was special assessments. The charges for services for water, sewer, electric are very similar, some public works, again, but that's some of the payments for, for items that people get charged for. But if you go down to the, I'm looking, just looking for the line on here. Last year, in 2019, you got a big estate distribution for your library. In 2020, obviously, you didn't get that. So that's, that's going to be a reduction compared to what you had last year. It's in the donation line, about seven lines from the bottom. And as I mentioned about the, a lot of development going on and special assessments related to that, you can, you can see the contributions from developers way up over last year. You know, you, you've got a pretty active development, developers going on in this community. A lot of places I see, you've got houses swapping from people moving in and moving out, not a lot of new development like you, like you see here. So that's, that's a good thing. And if we flip the next page, then we'll talk about the expenditures. Again, a pie chart there. And you can see just at the pie chart, 51% is public works. Public works includes your utilities and your city public works. That's why it's 51%. Your utilities have some, some big dollars in there along with your normal public works, streets and sanitation, all that type of stuff. Looking at the expense side, very similar to last year. Capital, one of the big changes, the big differences, if you look down in the capital outlay, it's about 10 lines from the bottom. These are items in your capital budget, okay? You had set money aside or you're using bond proceeds to buy fixed assets, basically, or make capital improvements. You can see public safety had a big jump, a new fire truck is what, what happened there. Other than that, as I mentioned earlier many times, the outlay portions doesn't match up with the bond, bond proceeds on prior page. You know, bond proceeds were on $3 million and if you look at the outlays here, they're in excess of $4 million. Well, like I said, sometimes you have money in one year, you have the cash, you spend it the next year, the expenditures are going to look greater than the, and then we're going to match up one to one. And I guess if we, if we, there was a little chart for fund equity on the next page. It has general fund, sewer utility, light and water. And obviously, the light and water, that's both your electric and water utility gather. The electric utility has sufficient reserves, the water utility just had a rate increase, so they're working on, you know, building their reserves up to, to, I would say, where they think they should be, okay? And on page seven, it kind of shows the changes in the, in the equity by beginning of the year, revenues, expenditures, and then the end of the year equity. That's the $2 million, this whole increase that we saw earlier. So that's really all I have to say tonight. You know, if you've got more questions, by the way, I do have to say thank you to the staff here. They're always really, really helpful, give us the information that we need. We did, actually, I think we did the preliminary audit, we generally come down early in January, do some preliminary work and then we come back in March to do the final work. We did preliminary work remotely this year. I don't think that caused any great issues with timeliness or us being able to complete what we thought we should be able to do in January. So I mean, that, that was a benefit and hopefully, one of these days, we get back to normal with everything.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Krieger. I know you answered my two questions, so very thorough job in your explanation. Is there any other questions?
I have a question, I think, for Mr. Wilkie. So if we were done here, then?
Why don't we leave Mr. Krieger the mic, just in case he wants to have some input as well, but go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Wilkie, I thought I read, maybe it was in your memo, oh, here it is. The full report is in the City Treasurer Finance Director's office. Are there any other documents related to the support that we were not provided on Graticus?
I don't believe so. Betsy, can you answer that question for me? I'm looking at it right now and both, both of total financial statement and the presentation are on there. So I think that's everything. Do you have anything to add, Betsy? You're live?
So there were two documents that were attached to the packet and one of them was the document that Mr. Krieger just reviewed. The other one was the full financial statement. And the only one that wasn't attached was a smaller document that contained like the audit entries, things like that. So it was a smaller document and I just didn't attach it. I can provide it if you're interested in seeing it. It's titled "Independent Auditor's Report on Communications With Those Charged With Governance and Management Advisory Comments." But by all means, I can provide it if you're interested to see it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I can make a comment on that briefly. It's, most of that information in that document is what I call boilerplate language. It talks about that we are independent and we comply with the ethics responsibilities. It mentions that we've gotten access to everything. It mentions stuff like there are estimates used in the, in the preparation of financials. There are, there's information provided by the actuary for the WRS that we rely on. Useful lies for fixed assets, okay? That's usually based on what the manufacturer recommends or what history has had, okay? And then there was, there would be one finding, I think, in that, in that area. And it's a finding for preparation of financial statements. If we do 100 audits out of our Manitowoc office, 98 or 99 of them will have that finding, okay? Some people look at that and will say, well, like how they said, we have issues here. The finding relates to the ability to prepare the lengthy financial statement with basically no input from us, okay? Most of my clients would not want to train somebody to be able to do that because the cost of training them is spread about one person. If I take continuing education or get the training on how to prepare financial statements, I can spread that cost over 100 people, 100 clients, okay? Like I said, I think there's only two of our clients in our Manitowoc office that actually do not get that finding. And everyone else has that, just because they don't have someone on staff that could prepare that financial statement from beginning to end.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that explanation.
Betsy, are those adjustments, were they included in this financial statement or are they outliers?
Did you say the adjustments?
Yes.
Well, the, the audit entries at the end of the year are typical. Some of them are just what we normally have to do and as far as how the bookkeeping goes. Some of them were already referenced in some of the material that you did see that was talking about, you know, some things that they found that maybe we didn't put in the, maybe the account that was appropriate and so we needed to move it to the correct account within the bookkeeping system. But no, that's, that's in the document that I can provide to you if you want to see those entries.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Krieger.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Is there any other comments before we go to roll call? All right, so we have Resolution 21-35 for acceptance. Roll call.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. That was good reading, by the way. It was very lengthy, but it looked like the, well, the city did a fantastic job staying on budget in this, this year of 2020, which was really a tough year. So I thought that was very respectable and thank you to the staff for doing such a wonderful job in 2022, or 2020. Thank you. All right, we're going to move back to Item C, which is the discussion on wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report. So Misty, can you read Resolution 21-34, I believe? I need to wear my glasses next time, so.
Resolution 21-34: Authorizing the City Manager and Staff to Submit the Lake Mills Wastewater Treatment Plant Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 21-34.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Fields and a second by Mrs. Quinell. So this was a public works motion that passed in public works. Steve, do you have any comment on this?
Yeah, a little bit. This is an annual item. It comes, it's a requirement of the DNR to submit this. It can be a little bit sneaky because down at the bottom is where you really want to read, because the resolution says that you are going to do whatever that says at the bottom of the page. And sometimes at the bottom of the page where nobody's read, it says you will build a new building, or you will fix something, or you will do something else. In this case, it doesn't have any of those. We had straight As all the way across the board, so it's a good-looking report. Of course, we're running short time on our plant. We will have to make some significant adjustments, so I know Steve will be looking forward to the next Public Works Board and the long, lengthy report on, on the wastewater treatment plant, but at this point in time, everything's fine.
All right, does anyone have any question or comment? All right, does anyone have any question or comment? Yes.
I just, I noted two minor typographical errors when I was reading it. And I know this report gets submitted electronically to DNR. I did send those corrections to Steve Wilkie. I don't know if they have to be corrected on the record, but I just wanted to share that.
Dan, do you have any comment on that?
The, no, I'm sorry, the actual C Mar, the, the, the actual report. Yeah, yeah. Okay, sure. Okay, I sent them to Steve Wilkie by email, so that's on the record. So I guess I would just ask that that be corrected, you know, before it's submitted. Just misspellings.
I already sent it to Bill, Dan.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Waters, I, I do have something. Mr. Wilkie, you noted in one of the sections, a reluctant answer, and it was in regard to being not short-staffed, but you could use another person. Is that something that will be addressed later on in the staffing study? Or I don't, you don't have to answer that now, but if it's not made for recommendation here that we would approve, then I would like to see it addressed later. And I don't know if this is the right spot right now to make that comment.
I, I've been in this business 35 years and I've never been to a department that didn't need additional people. So, so the question is, what isn't getting done and what is getting done? And the staffing study will help weed that out because they will make some determinations on what isn't being done and what is being done and how we could improve that. So I, over the, it's extremely difficult to add staff in the general fund. I'm not crazy about adding staff in the utilities unless I can feel confident that I'm gaining something from it. A lot of times, you'll note that we use contractors. And we use contractors so that when the job is done, they go away. I don't have to pay any of the benefits or the salaries or worry about laying somebody off or those types of things. At some point in time, yes, you have to have somebody. And, but every department have, would like to have more people. I can guarantee you, you're going to hear from the chief of police. Bet you'll hear from the public works director and maybe even the finance director. So those types of things are, you know, things I struggle with. I try and understand, I try and make my money stretch as far as possible while understanding what benefits I gain from one position or the, you know, the others. So you'll know when you go through the budget, you know, we do a lot of things where we contract part of it and we do it, part of it ourselves. A certain amount of that is liability coverage. Because if I, my contractor fails to perform, I have enough staff to come over. I can take some staff over and fix it. On the other hand, I, I don't have enough staff to do it all the time, so I can kind of switch staff and do those types of things. But it becomes more of a, a, trying to understand how to balance all the issues with the amount of money that we have available to us.
All right. Good, all right. Any other questions? Yeah.
I guess I wanted to make a comment kind of related to Mrs. Bishop's questions. And looking at this wastewater report in particular, I know that there are some positions within the utility work that the individuals have to have certain certifications in order to perform those duties. And so I think as we move forward with the staffing study, it'll be important for us to know that. You know, because like just bringing in somebody part-time to help plug a hole may not be the whole answer if they need to have a special certification or something like that. So just as we move forward, it would be helpful for us to know those kind of credentials that people might need to have.
There are eight different licenses that you can get as a wastewater treatment plant operator. Generally, on a operation our size, one or two people needs it. We actually have, most of our employees, well, all of our wastewater employees have at least one. At least two of them have more than six, and I think one of them has four. So we, we encourage our staff to be as trained as possible. And of course, they get additional pay for each certification that they get. So it's, it's a benefit to them and to us.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, let's move forward with the roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, moving forward, item D. Rock Lake Cemetery plat that's currently tabled and is remaining tabled. I know the surveyors out there are trying to answer questions that came from this board last time around, and hopefully we'll get that back on the agenda soon.
It's actually done, but it wasn't done soon enough to be on this agenda, so it'll be on the next one.
It'll be in the next meeting, fantastic.
Yeah, which I think will be July, the second meeting in July.
Correct. All right, item E. This is the acceptance of the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation and Wallace Park Story Walk. Motion 21-6-2-2. Misty, can you read the motion?
City council motion 21-6-2-2, accepting the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation of funds to install a story walk at Wallace Park.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to adopt motion 21-6-2-2 for the accepting of the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation of funds to install a story walk at Wallace Park. A second tap.
All right, so we have a motion from Mrs. Quidnow and a second by Ms. Curler. And I think we have some discussion here. Who wants to start with that, Steve?
I can start. You've been provided with the information that the library provided. Rob provided a map. I reviewed the documents. I do have some concerns. One of them being that there's long-term maintenance on this. That's more than I think is being anticipated. Has anyone walked the trail recently? Okay, it's, it's actually a mud trail.
Yeah, I know that in order to determine whether, whether, where exactly this was going to happen, Rob and, oh my gosh, thank you. They, they toured many different locations to try to determine which in, in Lake Mills would be the best option. So this was toured by at least Rob.
Yeah, the, I walked, I walked down it, I barely fit. The trail is mud. So the, the anticipation is, is that we would need to probably woodchip it more often, probably twice a year. It's pretty, it gets pretty dark in there. It's pretty invisible in the, in the trail portion. So you're going to see more vandalism than you would in normal spots. There are, I walked through the areas out here on a regular basis. Ticks are an extreme problem as are deer flies and other types of bugs. So when you're, you're approaching that, the type of activity that you're trying to take young children on and walk through these areas might be a little bit more difficult. So I'm, I'm just looking at it and saying, there, there might, I don't know that it needs to be outside Wallace Park. We either need to anticipate that we're going to be doing more maintenance on the trail. So there's more of a cost associated with it for the parks department. So we can go back to the staffing study and say how many additional people Eric will need. The, keeping it on the outside of the woods might be an easier project. So walking around just on the outside edge. Or did you look at wetlands? Because I know at one time there was a plan to put in a nature walk at wetlands. And I haven't heard anything about that option. Rob hasn't given me anything other than this was his, you know, his and Becca's proposal.
Hey, Steve, I know that the middle of the walking area.
I just had a bunch of questions shipped to the.
Can he hear me? Okay, in the middle of the walking area down the forestry area. I live in this area, so I have walked down that. And I understand what you're saying with how wide it might be. But I also know that to go completely around, I'm looking at the map right now, to go completely around does pose some other safety risks with regard to the, the major hill that's over by Industrial Drive as well as the potential to, I thought I'd stopped talking there for a second. He turned on the, he turned on the speaker, so I was confused. And then there was also potential for what was going to be done in the, the space between the parking lot and that large area hill. So having to do with the, the walkway between or within the forestry area, that may be something that the parks department, we, we consider putting down some, something a little bit more to help allow for some absorption. So it's not so muddy. But I, I don't, you know, that, that's essentially what this was for, was for kids and parents to be walking through that area to have a little bit of a nature walk.
I get it. I, you know, I looked at it, and have you seen the additional plans for Wallace Park on the northeast edge?
Yes, and it's my understanding that this would not interfere with those additional plans because it would be very close to the tree line.
I believe a portion of the additional plans includes moving into the tree line.
Okay, then that's new, I'm sorry, I guess I missed that part. The very bottom of that.
The.
Go ahead, Ms. Curler.
That was, I had a couple of questions. That was one of them is some, I was wondering, you know, in the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, there's a splash pad and a skate park that are planned for Wallace Park. But I don't know, you know, those plans haven't been developed into actually where they would be on the grounds to my knowledge. So I just wanted to make sure that this wouldn't interfere with that. I think this is a fabulous idea for Lake Mills, and I think it's really great to be thinking about encouraging reading and also thinking about this as public art for our community. I do share some of Steve's concerns, though, about the location. Because it's not going to be lit, so you really can't use it during the, you know, later, early, early hours or later hours or overnight. I think that maybe makes it a little more possible for, for vandalism. So I was wondering what other locations were looked at. Like Steve said, Wetlands Park, you could walk there from the elementary school. So that might be a good place where it's more open. The elementary school property itself, obviously that would require some collaboration. But I just, I'm not sure without having Rob here, what, you know, other locations that were looked at that might have less of the safety or vandalism or upkeep concerns.
Commons Park was considered. However, it was, and it wasn't just in Commons Park, but it was also behind the building in which we're in to bring it around toward the, the apartment buildings and up and around. Concerns, of course, safety crossing major streets as well as some concerns regarding being unable to identify where to go next. Given that if we are going in a kind of a convoluted route, it would make it difficult to know without any more signage as well as the maintenance upkeep. With the idea that it would take us back to the library, that was the whole idea. It would start at the library and then it would end at the library. But because of the amount of activities that occur at Commons Park, it was, it was regarded as not a very good choice. I know that we discussed some other locations. I'm not familiar with Wetlands as an option. And also wonder if maybe, well, I don't have enough information to be able to say anything about it. But Common, or Wallace Park was considered because of its, of its, of its location to current, a lot of, a lot of activities are already there with, you know, the park and the playground, or not the playground and the baseball fields and all the other things that were going to be happening there, either potentially or not. To be able to provide as well as the community that lives closest, that being the one that I live in, as well as the up and coming on industrial that there would be. And the, the daycare, which is nearby as well. So there's just a lot of opportunity that isn't there yet, but can be there for the story walk to be as, as, as popularized as it could be. I don't foresee a lot of young children walking in at night. So, you know, I don't think we have to worry too much about lighting. And if I'm not mistaken, Gerard, you're in, you're in the, in, in our audience, who is the library director, he would be able to tell you if the facilities or if the, the place where the book is located, if that's locked and how, if there would be any kind of vandalism, is it something that can be rectified?
Any other questions? With the library staff in the audience, do we need to spend the rules, Dan, to take questions? City staff, okay. Any questions for Mr. Saylor? Would Mr. Saylor like to address what the project's all about and the contributions to the community, that type of thing?
It looks like we have Becca online.
Everything has been explained pretty well. I also have Rebecca Fire, she's the children's librarian, she's online as well, if you had any questions for her. With their specifics, it's been, it's been a wide-ranging discussion. But I, I think I got most everything I wanted to into that, that two-page piece. I made it succinct as possible. I toured the trail, I went through that yesterday, just to be more fresh about it. And it is a bit overgrown. There are muddy spots. One of the reasons we're working with the parks department was for his recommendations for locations. As far as the trail maintenance, that's the parks department's purview about how often that's going to be done. The library has been working with the Lake Mills Community Foundation. Mr. Genthe is here, and speaking on behalf of the community foundation, they would be able to help towards any maintenance if it was needed on the library's part as well. Having it closed in the evening, I mean, the parks close at dusk, at 10 o'clock anyway. Yeah, so as far as nighttime, nobody's going to be there anyway. I consider it the same as any other park, it closes down at night. The bike trails at Tyranina Park, you're not going to be riding when it's dusk, you're going to wreck. Same thing, kids are going to really be in bed. As far as the location goes, we had looked at Commons Park. There's a drawback there in that Commons Park is just so busy anyway. It's kind of a newer location in Wallace Park. One thing I like about the Wallace Park location is the start and the end of the trail would be right by the playground. And that's the kind of age we're aiming at for early literacy. The idea behind this is an early, an early literacy initiative where the parents would be working with the kids and going through and reading the books. where the parents would be working with the kids and going through and reading the books together. And there's an interactive component you can have when you're outside. I also like that it's there for family events when softball and baseball games are there. Because when you bring along your three and four-year-old, when your older kid is playing a sport, you know how antsy and pansy they get and you want to take them and have them do something else. Those are the things that immediately come to mind that I kind of want to emphasize if there's any other questions.
Mr. Sailor, is it?
Yes.
Okay, I have questions about the, not the maintenance of the installation itself, but the replacement of the story because it looks like from the information we got, somebody from the library is going to come out and replace the story every so often. Is there a written plan for that or did I misunderstand? Because what I don't want to see is have this installation become stagnant or old if that wasn't the original intent.
Yes.
I didn't need to throw you off.
I was emphatically warning for everybody online and I knocked the microphone off the stand. In the plan, we would be changing the story out and Becca, correct me if I'm wrong here, about every two months. And that's what we have budgeted. So what you do is, it's, well, it's like the, the graphics that were put in there, it's kind of, it's locked down so nobody can get to it and then cover that we would take on and off. And the way we would do it, we was actually, we would actually buy two copies of the same book. We'd take the book apart and put the pages in, so it's double-sided along the way. And that way we'd be changing it about, like I said, about every two months. So it wouldn't be the same thing over and over again. And whenever I visited these kinds of things at state parks, national parks, museums, and you see the same thing over and over again, it's dated from like 10 years ago, it's, it's not very impressive, especially when the plexiglass is cracked or worn and yellowed. And so I've keeping that in mind as well. The acrylic pieces, we should be able to reorder from the same vendor or even actually cut our own and probably put them in there if we had to. If I remember right, it's in the graphic, I think it's just a single sheet. It's not hinged or anything like that. And so yes, it would be kind of a living, ongoing thing.
Dare I ask, would there be any licensing requirements or issues with putting up certain types of books or are you limited in that way?
Shouldn't be any. Becca, I know, has looked into that as well, but it's some of the same fair use principles as a storytime. We're not reselling it, we're not copying it or anything like that. We're not charging a fee.
Can you, can you, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Yeah, as long as you don't alter the book in any way. So like, as long as we don't enlarge the font or anything, if we're buying the books, we can put them out and there's no copyright issues, fair use.
Yep, go ahead.
I have one more question. And maybe this is for Steve, I'm not sure who, but we had this policy that was attached to the doc, the agenda item for documents to read. And it's not, and it's regarding accepting donations. I'm not crystal clear on whether it applies to the story walk structures or not. And there's kind of some implication that maybe we need some further policy, but I think we can use it at least to inform our thinking for tonight. And one of the concepts that I saw in that policy that I think is important is that if there's going to be any one-time or ongoing cost for the city, that we would hope that that would be included as a part of the donation. And I think Steve is kind of referencing some installation costs for the Parks Department as well as, you know, possible ongoing maintenance, shipping paths or brush clearing or whatever it might be. And that didn't seem to be in the budget. So that's a concern to me that I think, you know, if there's going to be a donation, but then that's going to create costs for us, I think we should try to see how that can be addressed.
And I have an answer for that and you can correct me wherever I may go wrong because I might go wrong. From what I understand from the Parks Board's meeting, that there, the only request that the library, that Becca has is that we dig holes. Not actually install the posts, but that we, you know, pull, dig the holes enough so that they don't have to do that one step. Easy peasy lemon squeezy because it's got, we have an auger and it's no big deal. It'll be done quick. And so the amount of cost with regard to the installation is minimal. As far as I know, Becca, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're taking care of all of that cost. The cost of the product, the cost of the maintenance and the cost of pretty much everything. The only thing that they asked of the Parks Board was that they drill the holes into the ground so that they don't have to put that much, you know, that they can at least do that and we have the machinery for it.
Yeah, that's correct. And we are also in charge of all of the maintenance. Like if, if one of the sign breaks, if it gets vandalized, we will be in charge of replacing it. That's all on the library. The only other thing, and you mentioned this, the only other thing is that the Parks Board would be in, in charge of would be keeping that path cleared. And I think they're doing that already, but I guess you were saying maybe it needs to be done a little more frequently then. But from what I understood with what Rob said, that you were already do, you know, you just have to mow a few more often. That's what he seemed to say, that all you really had to do was mow more often and it wouldn't be a big deal. So those are really the only things that we asked of the Parks Department is to keep that path cleared and then that initial digging of the holes.
Any other questions or comments?
I have comments from my council members here. I do like the idea of a story walk and so if I vote no on this, it's not because I don't like it. I still have concerns about the location and that upkeep and I would possibly like to see an estimate from the city manager on what that upkeep would entail of the trail. I would also like to see possibly just discussion of other locations. I know Commons Park was mentioned, but there's also another park off of, I was trying to look it up, I think it's Reed Street that, you know, is downtown in a possible location or maybe even using some of the grounds at the library. I don't know if that's been considered or just, you know, denied outright. I would also like to see in relation to Ms. Curler's comment about the policy that we do have. It appears the city council adopted the Parks Memorials and Donation Policy in 2014. And there is a procedure for making a donation and I'm not sure if a donation to the library is also considered a donation to the city. So, you know, to that extent, the city gets the money and then it gets funneled down to the library. That's fine, but I would like to see this procedure followed in line with our policy or we need to amend the policy if we would like to do something different. And I would like to see those procedures or that amendment need as opposed to approving this, this resolution that's maybe not right before us at this time. So those are my considerations that I just wanted to bring to my council members' attention and that's going to go into my consideration in our vote today.
I would like to make one comment in relation to Ms. Bishop's comments is that-
I'm sorry, Steve, hang on.
All right.
Was that Steve? Somebody was commenting, was that you, Steve?
Yes. I was saying something. This is Steve Wilkie?
Yeah, I just had heard comments in the background, I thought maybe you were talking.
Oh, the, I was going to say that in relationship to Mrs. Bishop's comments, Rob's history with me has been that every time that we add a new rock to his wagon, he drops a rock off at the back end. So I'd like to know which rock Rob's dropping off.
I don't understand the comment, Steve.
Okay, you, you can do a certain amount of chores, right? And when you only have so many people, you only do so many tasks. There's a limit to the amount of manpower you have and the amount of ability you have. It's like a wagon. There's so many rocks you can get on the wagon. Eventually, one has to go off in order to put another new one on. And that's Rob's history with me is, is that he says, "Sure, give me a new task." And if they don't pick one that they don't want to do anymore, I'll make that decision myself. And so we've gone down this road before and we've had this battle. So I'm kind of surprised that Rob made this gesture so easily. And I, I would like to at least have a conversation with Eric before I head down that road. I will work with Eric to, and Rob to come up with the cost of the upkeep and see how that goes. I wasn't really concerned about the installation cost. I figured that was pretty much covered and pretty minor, even if Rob's guys did it all. But the long-term maintenance, every year having to get out there and go through the woods and trim the woods back and chip the trail adds a, adds a whole new level of staff problem that's probably going to occur in the spring. And Rob's, or the Parks Department, Forestry Department is already struggling to get in the piers and the docks and all the picnic tables out and struggling to find staff to do all the work, at least until college is out. And for the last couple of years, that's been even impossible to do. So I, I just want, you know, to think about those types of things. I'm not opposed to the story walk, I think Wallace Park may be a great place for it. I just want to be able to consider all those items. I also want to note that on page 90 of the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, it shows that baseball field going about, I'd say 90 feet into the woods. So based on what I saw, I don't know that it would be a big deal to relocate that walk to the outside edge. Because it looks like it's a pretty minimal amount of work to pull the posts out. But I, I just want to go over the issues and make sure that everybody's comfortable with what's going on.
Yeah, Steve?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead. First off, I want to say if we have a park or a trail or anything else in the city that is not being maintained, it needs to be. So that's first and foremost. And so my idea with the maintenance issue on the storyboard was not into discussing necessarily the maintenance on the trail, although that is an issue if we put a storyboard there. That maintenance needs to be done. My issue with the maintenance on the storyboard is fixing the plexiglass, fixing any graffiti, that type of thing. And that's what I would want to see an estimate on from the city manager.
Thank you, because that's what I was going to say too. Wallace Park is one of our parks and if it's not being maintained, that's unacceptable. The point is, is that one way or the other, something has to be done at Wallace Park. If it's on the outside of the forestry or if it's on the inside of the forestry, there will be some kind of huge amount of work that will need to be done on the forefront to maintain so that there isn't going to be any kind of maintenance or long-term maintenance throughout the time. And I'm really excited, I would love to hear what Eric has to say, but I understand that you want to have that conversation with him first before you come and bring him up to the podium to have that. With that said, I know that there is, I have faith, maybe that's naive faith, but I have faith that there's, that this is a, an installment that would be more of a benefit to our community than a hassle. And it's, it is a bit perturbing just to know that there's that, that we're, we're setting up these barriers to have this happen when it really truly is going to be something that is beneficial for our beginning readers. So I, I hear where my council members are concerned. I also hear that they're on board with it. As far as the long-term maintenance requirement, I mean, from what I have understood and library people, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like you're in charge of that. That there wouldn't be anything having to do with the maintenance of the, of the posts themselves. The only thing I could see or that I've heard has to do with what our Parks Board is responsible for, which is the maintenance of the park. So correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but if, if there's anything that, that I'm missing, please let me know.
I want to make a statement and I'll try and make it as simple as possible, not getting too out of line. There's a certain amount of resource. And when we run out of resource, there's nothing I can do to be able to make a produce unless you give me additional resource. And that's kind of what Rob is saying, what he was telling me. And I kept saying, you know, there's no money. We're not going to be able to hire an extra person to be able to do all that extra mowing and all that extra trimming or take care of the garbage at the park or the commons or all those types of things that come together. So when you, there hasn't, a lot of times there have been decisions made where the expectation doesn't match the resources given. And I can't make everything happen without the ability to have the additional resources. And that is the crux about all the discussions and the donations and how they tie together and the long-term maintenance and who, who's going to fund all those long-term maintenance items is, you know, if the council's going to fund it, then we'll fund it. But you gotta, we're going to have to sit down and have some serious conversations about where the money's coming from. And those are the types of questions I always ask. So if the community foundation is continuing to fund it, how is the library going to fund it additionally? They, they come out of our general fund. Zero levy is zero levy. Unless they're getting additional donations all the time.
Mr. Sailor, do you have anything that you can add with regard to what Mr. Wilkie is asking?
Oh, well, I mean, as far as resources go, I mean, this goes back to what Steve said earlier about staffing. Is that all the departments want or need new staff to cover what they want to do. And, I mean, this is something Rob has mentioned in department having meetings before. There's things he wants to do. But I always considered this kind of a pre-existing path, that we wouldn't be adding additional work to it. My understanding is that the path was going to be continued anyway. As far as some of the other things, I mean, wouldn't it be some permanent installation? Maybe you could pull the posts up and move them as you need it to as well. And as far as maintenance goes, I mean, the, the signs themselves should be fairly maintenance-free except for weathering and possible vandalism. And well, actually it'd be me who'd be probably going out making any repairs or cleaning off graffiti. Chones Library would go through and swap the stories out, takes maybe an hour. It's my expectation.
If I can add to that, I will be, I'm going to be the one going out and changing the stories every two months. So when I go out, I will see if there's any vandalism, anything that needs to be replaced, anything that needs to be fixed. So it's not like this will just be sitting there and nobody's going to be paying attention to it. It's just going to, you know, get in disrepair. I'll be looking at it every couple of months at the most. And it will, and, and we've mentioned this before, but it will be the library that will be repairing this. So it should not come out of any Parks budget, any city budget. I mean, the library's part of the city budget, but it will come out of the library's funds. And we do get donations that it can come in. We also have a really active Friends of the Library that is willing to donate some towards this. But we, we are committed to this and we are committed to doing any repairs we have to. And we've talked, you know, we've, we've talked about it and all, all of the library staff is very committed to this project. So it's not something that's just going to sit in disrepair. Couple of other things I just wanted to mention based on what you guys have said. This is also, this is like a year-round thing. So yeah, in the summer, there might be a little additional maintenance. But I've walked it, I walked it in like the spring and it was great. Like I didn't, I, I haven't walked it recently, like in the last couple of weeks, so it must have gotten a little more overgrown. But in the spring, it was great. There was no, you didn't need to trim it, like everything, you know, the walk was, was perfect. So it is a year-round thing. So, so it's really like during the fall and, you know, spring, like there's really not any maintenance you'd have to do there. And then somebody had mentioned doing it on the library property. We did try that last year. We, we didn't, we just wanted to do one, you know, it was during COVID. We wanted something that we could do outside. So we set up one outside the library. It is just very cramped. There's not a ton of space, so it was just, it was kind of cramped there. And we had just little signs that were kind of flimsy because it wasn't a permanent thing, but especially I feel like if you put up those big signs, there just isn't enough room around the library to do it. And the other thought is too, that this is also to get kids out into nature. So that's part of this is, so we kind of wanted to do it through the woods and have this kind of nature walk as well. So it's, it is a literacy thing, but it's also to get kids out into nature, to get kids walking, so it combines those things. So that was another thought that we had, that why we really liked Wallace Parks.
Thank you. Ms. Curler, do you have a question?
I guess more of a comment and a proposal. I think you're hearing Rod's general support for this idea. And I think if we're going to have a story walk in Lake Mills, let's do it well and let's do it right. And we have a new Parks Director that just got confirmed tonight. I would like to propose, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item to the next meeting to allow time for Eric to meet with Becca and Gerard and with Steve Wilkie, get familiar with his new position and address some of the issues that some of the council members have raised and bring a little bit more information back to our next meeting so that we have a full set of information to make a decision on. Sorry, that was a long motion, but.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Mrs. Curler to table, second by Mrs. Bishop.
And just table to the next meeting.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed for one, Ms. Quidno voting no.
All right, so the motion's been tabled. Thank you. All right, the last item on council business is discussion on acceptance of a donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation, Commons Park, Big Santa. Motion 21-6-2-3. Misty, can you read the motion?
I'm going to read the title. I think that there's a typo in it, so we'll need to address that. City Council Motion 21-6-2-3, Accepting the Donation From a Santa to Install in the Commons.
All right. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept motion 21-6-2-3.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Field, second by Mrs. Bishop. Steve, do you have any comment on this?
Yes, it's a donation from a community organization who's being assisted by the Lake Mills Community Foundation, so it's actually a little bit of a broader group than just the Lake Mills Community Foundation. Santa has been a tradition here since the 60s. Santa started to take some serious deterioration and finally by about 2012 had pretty much become a public hazard. And so we didn't put him up in 13, 14, he was repaired and put back up. There were, when he was redone, they used a lot of the same materials as had historically been used. The... We asked the city building inspector to certify it and he refused. And he wanted wind shear documents provided. So the city worked with a structural engineer and he provided us with a set of documents.
Can you guys hear? Can you hear in the audience? Okay, I'm sorry, Steve. It's just hard to understand you and I just want to make sure people in the audience can hear.
Okay. The, the... So we went through and we had the structural engineer tell us how to meet the shear requirement and he provided us a steel frame and then the calculations for putting up the posts that Santa was then posted on. So it's the green post up by Mulberry Street. So we had to dig down and pour the concrete footings and then put the post up. And then there was a steel structure which Santa is bolted to. We then developed policy for putting Santa up and taking him down, which the city council approved. At that point, Santa was up for several years. And then he started to take more deterioration because they'd used a lot of the same wood and product that had been available there since the 60s. I believe the new organization is completely rebuilding Santa. Well, I know they are because the rest of Santa would deteriorate and got thrown away. So we want to attach Santa to that steel frame. The one calculation that we don't have yet is exactly the size and design of Santa. So is it, you know, three-quarter inch plywood? Is it one-inch plywood? Is he the exact same size? Is he taller? Is he shorter? Is he wider? Those all make a difference in determining, determining, determining the shear and the stability of the materials around it. So I believe everything is in place to be able to put Santa up. I think they've agreed to several of the conditions that we felt were necessary when we last talked. The only item that I would say is, is that in order to be able to guarantee that we will put Santa up, we need those additional details of the physical nature of the wood, the part of the Santa they're providing us. Does that make sense?
Yep. Anything else?
No, I believe that's everything I have. I appreciate all the work that they've done and I look forward to getting the information so that we can move forward to this. At this point in time, I think that there's a little bit of information that is missing. The council can approach it in two different ways. They can say that they approve it conditionally on meeting the requirements of the shear or they want to have it come back to the council again. So it's up to you guys.
All right, we have some community members in the audience that are part of the committee to build Santa. Can we have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules to allow for community members.
Second.
Can we have a rule call?
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'm sorry to block her, but she said the motion passed. I know that this is, Santa's been an important issue in the community. I know it was a big deal for Diane Frisch, a past president of the city council. And I know that she was working with this committee when she passed away in February, I believe it was. So would somebody like to speak on this? Can you state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Mary Doyle, 325 East Washington Street. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. I think some of the questions Steve brings up, I have some answers for. When you think back in the 60s when Santa was built by two gentlemen from town, their intentions were well-received, but materials now have been improved and talking with the committee that is in the process of helping do the build, we talked about buying treated lumber, three-quarter inch plywood. We are going to use top-notch sealant, priming, priming edge when the Santa's cut out, that's all going to be primed and sealed. I doubt that that was done in the past, even though he did last 60 years with minimal maintenance. We, our goal is to yearly, when Santa comes down, Paul Hermanson agreed, we would look at him, what repairs need to be done then, so it doesn't get so bad that it costs a lot or is a hazard to the community. Trying to think what else. I wanted to make sure. As far as size, the plan is he's going to be the same size. We talked with a couple of the guys that did install him over the years and they helped us with knowing the size, how far off the ground, again, for liability for the community, use the steel structure that was provided when the wind shear assessment was done. I've been assured those frames are available. Trying to think what else. I do have a design. He's not going to be exactly like the original Santa.
Eric, can you speak to the process of putting the committee together? And you went through some of the, I think you went through some different design and got community feedback?
We did. Right. You know, throughout the process, a lot of people, some people liked the Santa, others did not. And it all is in the eye of the beholder. So a woman from town, an artist who has worked on the previous Santa, her and I decided we will draw three versions of Santa. The original, a new version with a little bit of the original, but some new, a new look, and then a whole new look. And we had kind of a very informal input from the community. And what I found most touching was the families that came in with children. And it was a very simple process. Put your, put this piece of paper in your favorite one, one, two, or three. And at the end of the weekend, we counted, okay, which Santa had the most. And like I said, the children spoke and they wanted the new version of Santa. And I think it's more of what they know and recognize, even though I was partial to the ugly Santa, as some thought. He was a piece of folk art and, but the children spoke. And in the end, that is what's important for children to enjoy. So that was the process. So then we have a new version of Santa, but the same, pretty much the same size. I don't think, I don't know if there's anything else I missed.
So you're at the process of needing approval and then from this point, you'll start to do fundraising and building Santa? Is that how that works?
Right. What, how this all came about is when Santa was realized, he wasn't put up in 2020, a committee came forward and they're put into groups of what their strengths are, from fundraising to building to painting or to just donations or some people are, whatever you need me to do, I'll do it. So I have all these groups of people and I've met one time with the building committee, so we have our design. Then we met with all those that are excited to build. And I'll tell you, we have some top-notch woodworking people, construction people that do it for a living. And I'm just eternally grateful that the people that stepped up and a gentleman that is going to kind of manage the building, because what do I know? But so it was really, it's really a community effort in areas of expertise. So yes, what we need is the approval to move forward so we can start fundraising, because we're not going to accept any money until we have things in place. And that's where the Lake Mills Community Foundation came in. And I have, Lyndsey Parks here is going to head the fundraising and people are just waiting. They, they're anxious to be able to donate. Then from there, the guys and gals are ready to build, design and build. We have space. And people ready to get moving, to have them up by 2020, 2021. Sorry.
Is there any questions for community members? Yes.
I have a question, but first, when I saw this on the agenda, I went back through my old newspapers. So I do have a picture, I'll pass it along, from the newspaper, the three versions and the one on the right is the one that the children selected. So I guess two questions. One is, we didn't get any kind of a plan or anything in our materials. And so I think it would be helpful if we could receive, you know, even just a diagram and the information that Steve was asking about, you know, how much is this going to weigh? What are the dimensions of it and all of that? So that...
So size and, okay.
Yeah, size, weight, how it needs to be attached. Am I missing anything, Steve, that you had said? Just so, you know, that the city staff know what they're dealing with. And I understand when it was repaired in 2014, there was an engineering study actually that was done. And so we need to know if we need to, you know, go to that level to check that. So that would be, would be important for us to get. And then it looked like in the materials, there was still some question about the storage. I was wondering if you could tell us more about what the plan is for that.
Yes, obviously that is an important piece to preserving Santa because that, that is indeed what seems to have deteriorated him the most, even though, again, he did last 60 years, was being stored outdoors. So we are making every effort to find a place, whether it be a personal, like a personal storage or again, one of our people that are in the construction. We still are, we don't have that finalized. Ultimately, I guess if we had to, he would be outdoors, maybe with a... Did you say no? He'll be indoors. Okay.
Come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic.
From being at the meeting where this was, Patrick Doyle, 325 East Washington Street. From being at that meeting, Santa will be indoors. We'll find a way. And it's just from the outpouring from the community, if, I feel very, very confident if we don't have someone within the committee that can make that happen, if we open that up to businesses in the community, that will happen. No doubt in my mind.
I think it's understood that if indoor storage isn't found and the city is left to store it, it will be stored outside. That's an understanding, right?
Yes, yes. I guess why I said that was I wouldn't want that to inhibit us being able to build Santa. But the reality is, we're going to, we're going to make sure he's indoors. And it's just, and then we would communicate to Paul and the city where that location is and make sure that that information is out there, you know? Because that would be important too.
Did you have something to add?
And in reference to the wind shear, in conversations that I overheard Mary have with Paul, he assured us that doing the steel reinforcement was no problem whatsoever. And he was extremely confident that whatever needed to be done, his people would be able to do. That that's something that he was going to take responsibility for.
I agree with that statement to a certain point. The steel structure can hold up the same Santa that was designed before in the required wind shear. It's just that if the new wood product is shaped different, I need to have a structural engineer certify that the wind shear is being met. The steel structure and the post are going to do it, unless Santa got so big that they don't fit him anymore. But if he's in the same general size category, the steel superstructure that we built should be an easy attachment. There's some holes need to be drilled and some carriage bolts to put in. And then, but you also have to realize Santa is a beast when he's got all that steel on him. It requires a pretty sizable truck to... sizable truck to lift him up and down. And when the wind's blowing, he's even more of a public hazard. So, being able to move him in and out of a building, we'll want to be able to work very closely with how we do that, and figure out how that's done. But overall, it sounds good to me. It sounds like, I just, when they get it done, I want to, you know, have the engineer certify it.
And how do we go about that? What is that process? To have an engineer certify the plans, or the final Santa? What does that look like?
Well, an engineer would always prefer to certify the plans, but he's also going to want to certify the final product. We call that design and as-built. So, but in this case, you could probably get away with, you know, the as-built product, just bring it in. If we need to do anything else to bolster the structure, we'll let you know. So it depends on what you want to do.
Okay. Steve, I have a question real quick. What was the original Santa made with?
I believe it was either...
Or made of?
I believe it was either three-quarter or one-inch plywood.
And how heavy, with the things that he needed in order to get up there, how heavy was he? And how much of a difference is it going to make with the way that the Doyles are recommending?
Well, it sounds, based on the information that we're getting, that he's going to be pretty much exactly the same. So there's basically one truck we use that can lift something like that, and that's a pole truck. So, Santa was pretty heavy, you know, a beast to deal with, particularly in the wind. Might have been some of the reason why he had some problems surviving.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, the procedure to putting up the old Santa would be approximately the same procedure as the new Santa?
Yes. If that's the, you know, if they use the same post, pole, and the same steel structure to attach him to, he will be lifted by a pole truck, and then they bolt him to the structure of the post.
So could it be a condition of part of this, and maybe we amend it, that their plans include the same kind of structure as what was there before, just with different material? And that way, then, we're not having to reanalyze with an engineer and slow the process down?
I think that's already in her comment, that she had submitted to the board, that she was, that that's the intent. And it's also wrote into the motion that the city manager will work with the group to make sure that it meets those conditions?
I still have to have an engineer certify it, but that'll be in our nickel. If there's nothing wrong, we'll let them know.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Mr. Wilkie, you mentioned previously that there is a policy for the city to put up and take down the Santa. Is that policy still in effect, and how could I find it?
It's by motion. And so, I imagine you could do a search in Granicus, or you can come in and we can find it for you. We have all our motions in a spreadsheet.
So would that be a motion that we would have to do again this year to put up the Santa, or is that motion still in effect, do you think?
I would anticipate it's still in effect until someone tells us it's not.
Okay, I'll have to review it, but I think you're probably right. Thank you.
I know that when he didn't go up last year, there was a lot of discussion at council on what we would do and how we would handle it. And, actually, I know when the guys took him down in 19, they mentioned to me that he wasn't, he was in bad shape. But I still emailed a notice that said, hey, you guys need to get Santa up. And it came back out, there is no Santa. And, so I, the council talked about it, and we discussed where we would add. Diane picked it up and started running with it. So you got a little bit of background information on what happened at council.
This is Curler. Do you have a question?
I guess, maybe I'm trying to just wrap up sort of where we're at, but it, not to be a stickler, but I think really, we just need to know, like, what is the actual Santa that is being donated, or that is proposed to be donated? So we just really need, you know, that plan or description of the dimensions of it, what the weight is, how it's going to be attached, then the city staff can, when I say we, the collective, I guess, the staff need that, so that then they can, you know, just verify that they can install it safely. And that's what it seems to me, that's the only thing that we're really lacking.
Can I address the council? My name's Phil Manley, 123 South Ferry Drive. I'm part of the build team. So, we're going to, we're talking about using three-quarter inch marine-grade plywood, not just treated plywood, marine-grade plywood. So the weight's going to be consistent with the weight of the old Santa. The scale is going to be the same as well. I think 12 feet wide at the widest, and I think 28 feet tall, which is the same as the old Santa. So what we're going to try to do is be able to use the existing metal structures to fit the new Santa on, so all the pieces will fit together, basically the same way they did with the old one. So that's, that's what we're trying to do. So, if the wind shear calculations were such on the old Santa, our hope is that they'll be the same on the new Santa. So.
I'm going to admit here that I do not know what the old Santa looked like, and so I'm a little bit at a loss. Was a structural analysis required on the old Santa? And so I guess I'm not understanding why that's the hangup. Is this thing so big that it now needs a structural analysis? It is. Okay, I'm getting nods, yes. Okay.
And it's up in the air, yeah.
Okay, I apologize for making notes.
So my understanding is, the structure was built for public safety reasons, to make sure that it would stand up to the wind shears that it needed, and that was part of that process. So, that was developed after the fact, but that was to bring it up to standard.
I'm just being mind-boggled that we needed a structural analysis. So now I think I understand better. Thank you.
I can tell you that.
Any other questions? So there's a motion on the floor. Oh. You want to add to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to, my name's Aaron Gempte, 121 Bayfield Court.
Aaron, you're just making the process longer.
I'm trying.
I'm teasing, go ahead.
Thanks, Greg. I'm here representing the Lake Mills Community Foundation. And I guess I just want to take this opportunity to say that this is, at the end of the day, all materials, all labor, everything is a gift, right, to the city. There's, we don't expect any other man-hours, any other year for the last 60 that it took to put him up and take him down. And we are offering a place to store him, potentially. So we think it's kind of an open and shut case from that standpoint. But I also want to take this opportunity to say that we're, our foundation is matching up to community donations totaling $5,000 for the construction and installation of him, of Santa. And I think the community organization, or this private entity group that's established here has said that they can raise that other $5,000 and keep it under budget. Any extra funds that are left over, which we kind of anticipate, we're going to leave in a perpetual account, so that if there are maintenance issues, or there are things that come up in the future, that say, hey, we need this, we need that, number one, we're going to raise our hand again and say, hey, the city needs some extra funds for this, it's not within the budget, anybody wants to contribute to this fund can do so. But there may be funds there additionally down the road for additional repairs and things that are necessary. That's kind of what our vision was long-term. If it becomes, as years go on, a holiday decorations in the park fund, whatever it might be, you know, we've had discussions within our board that say, hey, those beautiful lights didn't go up on the light poles last year because we got new poles and the old ones didn't fit. You know, I don't know if it's in the budget this year to put new lights. I haven't looked at and read any of the minutes prior to this. But, you know, these are, this is something that could take off from here. And eventually, if you, and again, I don't know if any of you have researched our foundation locally, we have over a million dollars in our endowment fund. We're challenged every year to find enough nonprofit organizations to come to us and fill out grant applications, so we can grant money out to them. We've had four years in a row where we had $30,000 that went left ungiven. I'm challenging the council tonight a little bit to say, hey, and I'm going to back up to something that was on the agenda just a little bit ago, that if, if there's an issue with labor costs, or if there's an issue with maintenance of a story walk, or if there's things like that, please, please, don't hesitate to fill out a grant application. Come to our organization and say, hey, we could use $1,000, $2,000, whatever it might be, $5,000 to repair. There are so many community organizations in this town, volunteers like myself and these people. I'm on four different boards at different times. I've been on the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club, the Optimist Club. We jump in and we help as man-hours. If people can't help with their checkbook, they help out with their labor. And I would say, just come to these organizations, raise your hand, it's okay to ask for help, because we can do it. If it, I understand the bureaucracy of a city council and an annual budget and that kind of thing. But this community is full of volunteers. And we will, you raise your hand, we'll step up. There'll be people out there repairing, laying mulch down, whatever it is. I have three kids that came through the school system, and they're looking for volunteer hours. And maybe that violates child labor laws, I don't know. But I'm just saying, please, when it comes to these discussions, don't hesitate to reach out to your Rotary Clubs, Chamber of Commerce, and organizations like ours for money, because on an annual basis, there's enough there, in my opinion. So, thank you.
There's questions, Eric.
Aaron?
We'll start a question.
You might want to turn me down. My question is, with the funding coming from these organizations, and I'm completely on board with it, maybe this is a question more for Steve, but then, old Santa was part of Lake Mills City, as in, he was owned and maintained by the city, by the city government. Having him be part of another part of our community, does that then keep us out of any kind of jurisdiction with regard to Santa? Do you understand what I mean? Like, you're talking about having to do maintenance, or if there's anything like that, you will fund it. Cool. But will he then become another part of the community as opposed to owned by the city?
He is being donated to the city.
The donation.
Okay.
The donation.
Okay.
But they did also include in the notes that they're looking to do maintenance on an annual basis.
Yes.
So that's part of the agreement as well.
I apologize for not, I was paying attention, but I obviously wasn't understanding.
Aaron, being a part of Rotary, knows that the Rotary concession stand building belongs to the city, but Rotary actually maintains the building. And...
Yeah, we had a 100-year lease for a dollar a year. That was our donation, the building. And we agreed to lease it back for 100 years. And the city does a great job maintaining it, you know? We just, we go there and run it, volunteer, and sell concessions, and parents love it. They can come buy their water and popcorn and everything else at their softball games and soccer games. So, yeah, Steve's correct.
We do a lot of this. Rotary Club maintains the signs. They're actually city signs, legendary Lake Mills, at the entrance. But Rotary maintains them for us through an agreement. They're, you know, basically what we look at is trying to make, I think, the Veterans Memorial in Commons Park is maintained by the Legion. So, it's not uncommon for us to have a piece of property that we own, where we have an agreement with that organization to continue the maintenance. And it kind of helps us control long-term costs. It also forces us to try and determine what goes where, and, you know, because Commons Park is only so big. So, you know, having a story walk in Commons Park is not the best idea, even if it worked great. The, you kind of try and figure out what the plan is, where it goes, what are the options, and those types of things. So it's, these organizations have worked with us for years. I have to tell you, when I started here, the foundation was just starting, and they didn't have a lot of money, so we didn't spend a lot of time asking. But maybe the city will ask for more. We'll see how it goes.
We try to spread the money, we try to spread the money around as best we can. We don't want to favor one organization over another, that's for sure. But, you know, you can look through the records of our, you can, lmacf.org, that's our website. So you can see years and years worth of giving of all the different organizations we've gave to. And it simply is fill out a grant application, here you go. And the city is a nonprofit entity that we can support, or a city department, whether that be the library, whether that be the Parks Department, whether that be whatever. So, yes. I will tell you that, and I know you want to speak to that point there, but when our community organization establishes a new fund within our umbrella, which this will be a separate fund, set aside for community donations, and our own 5,000 matching grant, okay? Once it goes in there, we're going to develop, we draft our own memorandum of understanding, an MOU, that we asked a representative from this organization that's going out there, grassroots, building it, maintain, you know, doing the things that they've offered to help, to kind of get their agreement. So they're going to sign off on their side of it. We're going to ask a city official, probably Mr. Wilkie, to sign off on the city's side to accept the gift. And in that MOU, there'll be terms and understanding within that group. We established one for Rotary Park years ago, okay, for the funding of the playground equipment there, that we partnered with the Rotary Club. We had to establish a fund. We're required by law to establish an MOU with an entity when we agree to establish a fund and give it to them. So that is a two-way street on that. We will, it'll be all spelled out on the MOU. I know Mr. Drescher has reviewed those in the past with previous ones. And Mr. Wilkie, I'm sure has seen that, too. So, I'll let, if you want to speak to that.
The goal was that we start building in June already. And there are some things, until we start building, are we going to know. Some decisions will be made on the fly, basically. So, and you know, with people, it's all volunteer, people are busy, busy lives with their families, things come up. I am getting a little worried that we keep delaying. I feel that, I don't know if, it's hard to say, will he be ready for this year? I'm, I started this process in January with Diane, and we're already mid-June. So you can, and I'm fine with the process, but as you can, for me, I was, I didn't think it would take that long just to get to here. So, yeah, I'm, it's not an easy answer, because it's hard to know. When, you know, with construction, well, one guy might be on vacation, the guy who, or, you know, you know, you know what I'm trying to say. So, I just wanted to say, I think in good faith, we're going to, I'm going to get my teams together, and we're going to start. And then, I guess, if we need approval, it'll be at the next, whenever that next meeting is, I think we're, I think we're going to get started. I think that's what might be the best move. And then, we can seek approval, if that...
I do.
Fantastic. So there's a motion on the floor. Can we go ahead and have a roll call vote on that?
Mr. Fields?
We didn't ask for a roll call yet, I don't think.
I guess the question is, now that I asked for a roll call, can a table be made? Good question.
I think, we don't have a motion to table.
Yes. That's what I thought. So Misty, can you make a roll call vote?
What are we voting on? I'm not clear.
The original motion?
The original motion?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop? Ms. Quedno?
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Motion passed four-one with Ms. Curler voting no.
All right. So congratulations, Santa Committee. Actually, congratulations to the city. We get a new Santa. So uh, yeah. All right. Looking forward to it. Thank you for the donation. All right. So we're moving to item number 10 on our agenda, which is recommendation for future agenda. I have one. Let's get this IT system fixed.
Right.
All right. I don't know if that was appropriate, but anything else? All right. See you then. I move for adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.